I'd like to call the government board meeting to order for June the 22nd, 2016, 7:00 PM. Could we have a roll call?
Shakil Ali.
Here.
Leighton Koo.
Here.
Maria Brizuela.
Here. And please note that we have two members absent and do the...
Yeah, hardships.
Hardships. So, let's go on to our pledge of allegiance. And I don't know that Maria is ever led, Maria, would you like to lead this?
Okay. Go ahead.
Maria, would you like to lead us in your pledge? Thank you.
Mary, begin?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, go on to, let's review the board meeting guidelines that we have before us. Okay, everybody ready?
Yes.
All right, let's move on. Okay, approval of the agenda, can we have a motion on that?
Move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guess there's no opposed. Number six, special presentations under number A, employee retirement resignation resolutions. So, the board will recognize the long-term district employees with a resolution for their years of service.
And just a reminder for the board, last fall, we started doing this, we had a couple of retirements over the summer, and we presented them with the resolutions in the fall, and then we thought it'd be nice for the board to have that opportunity to present the resolutions that you approved throughout the year.
That's great.
We have, we have two who are here today.
Okay, so, I guess we'll read the resolutions so that we can hear. Okay, so, the first one is, whereas Catherine Diane Crowell has been a classified employee in the Jefferson Elementary School District for 23 years, whereas Catherine Diane Crowell began employment as an instructional aide, special education at Ben Franklin and Thomas Polisita School on October 25th, 1993, then transferred to Christopher Columbus as instructional assistant, special education, on February the 7th, 1994, and then transferred to Franklin D. Roosevelt on March the 16th, 1995. And Catherine Diane Crowell was promoted to school administrative assistant at Coma Elementary School on April the 17th, 1995, and then transferred to Franklin D. Roosevelt on July 31st, 2004. And whereas Catherine Diane Crowell has been, has been, that's hard to see, oh, has been evaluated as an out, has been evaluated as an outstanding diligent and caring employee who works well with students, families, and staff. And whereas Catherine Diane Crowell has been recognized for many accomplishments, including receiving the following PTA Honorary Service Award, the Certificate of Recognition California Legislature Assembly, Certificate of Accommodation, City of Daly City, and nominated as the Classified School Employee of the Year for 2012. And whereas Catherine Diane Crowell has been involved in many of the district's committees, including Jefferson Elementary School District's Calendar Committee, CSEA's representative, JESD CSEA negotiating team, and a JESD SELPA Resource Parents representative. Now therefore be resolved that the Jefferson Elementary School District does hereby adopt this resolution commending Catherine Diane Crowell for her accomplishments on behalf of the community, the staff, and the children of Jefferson Elementary School District, and it's signed by all five school board members and dated June the 22nd, 2016. Diane, want to step forward?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. It's a lot of years being at Jefferson, and I had started subbing, I think, in 1984, so, a lot of years between there and now. Appreciate everything. The school district has not only been my family for many years, but so many connections with, with everybody. It's, it's been a big part of my life. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
We'll continue to be part of your family in your life.
Yes. Friendship is way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Diane, before you're coming to work for the district, you were also a mom and PTA leader, and very active down at Franklin D. Roosevelt School, and there was a time, before these guys started, in the old days, when the school district was contemplating, or it was a recommendation that the school be closed, and she led the group of people together by saying, "Come down and see what it's like to have our children walk up across the highway," and that did it for us.
Yeah, and now we're junior high, so officially all the way to eight, so I really truly feel like it's a dream come true for me, something that I always look forward, and I hope will be a great asset for you guys in the future in the district.
Well, thank you for the many years, for everything that you've done, probably too many to say, that resolution is beautiful, but there's probably a lot more we could have put in there.
Thank you so much.
But thank you, thank you.
I think our friendship too goes back that far to 1984 too, Mrs. Brizuela, yeah.
That you're still part of the family, so don't worry.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So now we have another resolution, and this one says, whereas Gail Minchell has been a classified employee in the Jefferson Elementary School District for 19 years, and whereas Gail Minchell began employment as an instructional assistant at preschool, the general purging the preschool on November the 17th, 1997, and whereas Gail Minchell has been evaluated as a responsible and reliable employee, and whereas Gail Minchell has been evaluate, oops, oh yes, I'm sorry, I thought I was reading the same line, but it's the same thing, has been evaluated as a dedicated, highly dependable employee who works well with students, families, and staff, and whereas Gail Minchell has been evaluated as, as an outstanding member of the preschool, they're really testing me on this. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson Elementary School District does hereby adopt this resolution commending Gail Minchell for her accomplishments on behalf of the community, the staff, and the children of Jefferson Elementary School District, signed by all five board members and dated June the 22nd, 2016.
Thank you. I honestly don't know what to say, I'm still working, I'm on my lunch break from my other job, many of you know I work for Trader Joe's, so, when I was telling people about this, they said to me, "Do you have to give a speech?" I said, "God, I hope not." So, thank you all.
Yeah.
This was a really nice surprise, I wish somebody from my family could have come, but either working or they're too far away, so thank you.
We'll still see you at Trader Joe's.
You will still see you.
Gail, I want to say also thank you for all the things you've done, and some things that aren't listed that you've done in the district, and a lot of it is her belonging to the nature group, and she's spent many, many years and hours of keeping that organization together and celebrating with Native American Indian families, and for that, that's kind of how we got a little closer too, is being part of that as well. So, thank you for what you've done for the preschool children, many of you, I don't know if you had a chance yet to go to preschool, but it's awesome to go there. When you go there and see the children, in fact, they've come before the board, and they can recite the, you know, for the pledge of allegiance, they can sing a song, and they, they're so enthusiastic, and they're just little preschool kids, and it's amazing what you guys teach them. So, thank you for what you've done for all the children here and the community, and she didn't have far to walk because she lived right next door to the school.
I did.
You still do, right?
I still do.
So, you are a part of the JESD family, and so we want to see you, and thank you for everything.
I'm still here, you guys know where to get a donation.
Oh, I, yeah, I know.
I'm in charge of donations at Trader Joe's, yeah.
Yep.
Oops. Just print your federal tax ID number.
That's right.
And for both Gail and Diane, enjoy your retirement immensely, and, you know, hope that you have many, many years of wonderful memories. Okay, so, does anybody else want to say anything here? So, number seven, communications, this is a time when a person's wishing to address the board, and we don't, oh dear, we lost our audience.
Don't have speaker cards.
I don't have a speaker card, so we'll just move on to the next one. Next one is administrator's comments.
Good evening, last board meeting, we were in such a rush that I didn't get to express that I went to the TRP graduation, which was really amazing because it was 100% graduation rate, which was really, really cool, and then the day after that, went to Fernando's and to Ben Franklin's graduations, and it's really nice, every year, the students are so excited and happy, and they're moving on to their next chapter in life, so, I just want to say it's another year, another year under the belt at JESD.
Yeah.
That's true. For me, it was, you know, kind of strange to go see all three for the first time to kind of, you know, gauge the differences between all the, you know, different graduations, and I was able to bring that back to TRP and make some recommendations based on what I saw, so, I was very impressed by the other schools, and it was neat to be on the other side of that. Just happy the year's over, moving in, you know, to my first year under my belt, I was real pleased working with my colleagues in CSEA and AFT and wrapping up our agreement with AFT, and hopefully have everything wrapped up, they're voting with CSEA next week, and going into the summer with agreements down, so, thank you for all your help.
So, I just want to let you know that we, school is actually still in session for some students, we have some summer programs happening, we have two Big Lift Inspiring Summers at John F. Kennedy and Thomas Edison, we have over 300 students at both, between those two sites, they've been underway since last Monday, and it's going really well, and I visited last week, and so, we're really excited about those programs, it's a five-week full-day program. We have two other programs, we have extended school year for students with an IEP that needs some support so that they don't regress over the summer, and that's at MP Brown, and then we also have a program, it's also grant-funded like Big Lift, it's a math, summer math lab that Ms. Debbie Borda is coordinating and very busy, so last week, the teachers were trained, and it's really kind of a training ground for the teachers, and then students come for two weeks that they can practice some of those skills that they've learned, and they have more professional development, and then it will hopefully be translated into the regular school year, so that's for the next, this week and next week as well. So, we'll be sharing more about that at the end of summer, beginning of the school year as well, but, yeah, so we're really excited about the summer programs that we're offering because we haven't been able to offer them for a long time.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to also announce that we continue to participate in the Seamless Summer Food Program for youth under 18. The sites this year that we have is MP Brown, Ben Franklin, and I'm not sure about Thomas Edison and John F. Kennedy, but it's, do you know if that's open to the community, through the library? Okay. And it's also all ages. Yeah, JFK and Thomas Edison can serve all ages, Fernando as well. Get the word out, we want to make sure that folks who are not, who needs, need to grab a bite or something like that, know that, that they can do so. Youth only though at MP Brown and, and Ben Franklin. JFK? Yeah, only where Big Lift is, is it? That's JFK.
Oh.
So, youth only at MP Brown and Ben Franklin.
Right, right.
That's it.
Is there any correspondence?
I did not get any correspondence this week. I got quite a few, but not, not worthy, not worthy of sharing.
Okay, so, board members' acknowledgements and commendations?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge some of our former graduates that approached me after the graduation at Polisita, and is actually, one of them is an employee of our district right now too, but I really appreciate the fact that they want to give back to our community and the schools, and they're interested in teaching our young people how to do computer programming and coding, so I'm looking forward to see how that progresses. I know they're in talks right now at Polisita with Mr. Turner, and I also would like to commend the district once again for being accepted or being part of the Big Lift Grant and being able to offer a more expanded summer program. What else, I wrote something else down here, Big Lift, also the graduations, I just want to commend all the middle schools, and especially whoever helped the students write their speeches, because I've been to a lot of graduations, and I know that they received some help, but I could tell that the students really spoke from their heart, and they really had some insightful things to say, and I also want to commend Mr. Vidalas for throwing away his speech at the last one and speaking from the heart as well, he was moved by the moment, and I was too, so I kind of knew that you would veer away from your written speech, so I just really feel great to be a part of this board and to be able to help the community in this way, and people are coming to us and letting us know too that they appreciate the work that we're all doing together in our district, and so I just want to commend us all.
I want to say, I was also at the graduations as well, and I enjoyed the opportunity to speak at the graduations, especially Fernando, I graduated from Fernando, so it felt like coming back full circle to the graduation, so, but I also want to congratulate everybody who graduated, and I'm looking forward to hearing about all the great work coming up, all the summer programs from our school district, they sound like amazing stuff already, so I just want to just hear and see what they actually get to do for single day.
I do have two more comments to make, I forgot to mention, July 11th, which is a Monday, we will be hosting the Big Lift Summer Learning Launch Event, and it seems sort of weird to do a launch event three weeks into the program, but in the big picture, this is the first summer that they're doing Inspiring Summers, so, it's a launch event for the Inspiring Summers Initiative, not so much the program this summer, so, it's going to be hosted at Thomas Edison School, I believe it's nine o'clock in the morning, is that right, or 10? I'll get you, I'll get you information, and you'll hear from luminaries such as Mr. Vidalas and other less, other, other less-known county folks, but Mr. Vidalas, you know, is, is the draw, so I hear. And then also, Mrs. Brizuela and Mr. Koo and I both had an opportunity, all, all three of us had an opportunity to meet the new superintendent for Jefferson Union High School District. Mr. Dan Burns joins the high school district, comes from Salinas Valley Union High School District, and is ready to help the board and the community sort of fulfill the vision that they have for their schools, and I look forward to connecting with him when I return from vacation and address some of the issues and concerns that we want to get together on early, so.
That's great, I missed that meeting, I forgot, I'm glad you made it, all three of you.
Yep.
So, so, I guess my comments will be that Bernie told already that we went together last night?
I'm sorry, I thought you'd made your comments.
No, 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 I didn't say it yet, but that's okay, but anyway, yeah, it was really nice, he brought his wife with him, and she's very social and nice, and looks like we're, she's going to get along great with helping out with the different things for, for the schools. So, anyway, they had a nice meeting, they also thanked a lot of the people that were there that helped them in their measure E that passed, and so, I reminded them all that we'll be wanting, there'll be an opportunity for them to be helping, another one coming up soon, so, that was really nice. The thing I want to say was the Yass's graduations were wonderful, it seems like each year, they seem to be getting better as far as the students, what messages they have, and what, how they, what they do, you know, it's, it's just amazing, so, I think that has a lot to do with their education in our district and some of the role models that they have that are helping them, because when you mention about who's helping them write the speech, it's probably they get motivation from a teacher that helps them, you know, not have to have a canned speech, but to have something that comes more from their heart, which was great. So, there was a couple of things, yeah, I was going to bring up about the July 11th meeting, but I think you have to have an invitation or something, or a ticket? And every time you go on the website, it gets to be less and less, so if you guys want to...
So, I will, you can come in with me if, if you did not do that, we'll walk in the back door, don't worry, you don't need to worry, but members of the public should go to thebiglift.org and be able to register there.
Getting in the computer right away.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, but, but you should have no problem getting in, you just, you just say, you know the luminary speaker.
We also know, he wants us there, yeah, he wants us there, we're the, we're the fan club, right? But that's great, and I think there was something else that I was supposed to remember, and I just want to say about the summer program, I haven't been able to go and see anything yet because it just started, but I would hope that maybe we can bring some of that, gonna bring it to the board, but what makes me very happy is that this time, this year, we've got programs that are more enhancing and building on what we're, we're doing, rather than just saying, "We have summer school," whereas in the past, sometimes summer school was a place that children can go instead of being home, you know, and then we've, we're sad that we lost it for a while, but now it came back, I think, better than ever, so I want to thank everybody for what you're doing to make it more exciting.
There you go.
Hey, I like it, okay, now we'll say that too, inspiring, you know.
That's what it's called, inspiring.
Yeah, I know, I'm teasing you, but, yeah, but it is, it's doing it, because I think the students are going to come back, you know, very excited about it, so, thanks for everything that you're doing, that you're putting into it. I know there's probably a few other things that we went to and we saw and we did, but I can't think of it right now. I would like to ask that tonight, we close our meeting in memory of Erlinda Galeon, and she's been a member of PB, PPRC for a long time, one of the founding people, and they have, they've helped students with scholarships, they've helped many people in need, and it's, their office is up on Dunlop Sierra, she apparently was battling cancer for a while, thought it was okay, and, and then she passed on, so, on June 17th, when she, she passed away, and they had, or they had this, the memorial for her, and I did attend, and it was, wow, amazing how many people were there for her, so, I have this in case anybody would like to see it, so with that, I think that's all I have to say tonight. Okay, so we can move on, now we get to go to consent agenda, do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a resolution on this? Okay, could you call the roll, Maria?
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye. I thought I remember seeing a little star, a little asterisk someplace, okay, so now we get to go down to the letter E, the Local Control Accountability Plan?
Is there anything else to discuss with that, or are we just?
No, I mean, there was a minor revision that we needed to make in one of the sections just to explain a little bit more of what we were doing, but there were no changes other than that.
Okay, so, can we take a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the Local Control Accountability Plan for the 2016 and 17 school year.
I will second, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, F, adoption for the fiscal year 2016-17, the proposed budget for active district funds.
I would like to speak to that, at the last meeting, we had the proposed budget, but that, at that time, the board had not yet approved the bargaining unit agreement with AFT, and so, at that time, that was not in the budget. Since then, that has been added to the budget, that is the only change, and so, the, the first page is the budget as you saw it at the last meeting, so it does not include, this particular one does not include the increase, and then the flip side of that is the fund balance associated with that first-page budget that was from the last meeting. On page three, page three shows the budget that I'm bringing to you for approval tonight, and as I said, the only change is the increase of costs as associated with the AB 1200 for the teachers bargaining, so, Ms. Brizuela would be the one, if you just flip one page, that one.
Oh, no, I know, but I was looking for something else.
Okay.
That you said.
Oh, oh, the backside.
You said page three, okay, never mind.
Yeah, okay, because I did both sides.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
So, what we've got is just the increase that was on the AB 1200, and the change that you would see in revenue is only because the amount that has to then go to unrestricted, so that reduces the revenue because we make a transfer, and that affects, and the more we spend, the more it affects the amount that we put towards routine restricted maintenance and repair, so, the only change on that are throughout the years and in the out-years are what has to do with the AB 1200. Also, just so that you know, if you, well, if you flip to the next page, you'll see the... you'll see the, how the cash is, the cash balance, the end fund balance is affected as a result of this. And then the next page where you again see this, so page five, this is the more liberal funding from the state. If the state does come through with a better funding level than our more conservative level. And so it appears better, it'd be nicer. And it helps our end fund balance. As you can see on the following page, it gets a little bit better. And the last page I wanted to point out to you is how in the out years, given this budget, barring any more one-time funds, because the state does give one-time funds on quite a regular basis these days. But because they're one-time funds, I can't budget them in the out years. And so the budget is built on no out-year one-time funds being received by the district. Should that happen, should we not have increased revenues of other sorts? And should we maintain the budget the way it is now, then in the out years, we would have to make some reductions. In 1718, we would have to reduce by 1.2 million. In 1819, we continue that 1.2 million reduction and we would have to reduce another 4 million. So it'd be 5.2 million. And then 1920, we would continue the reduction of 5.2 and add 0.7 million. So it would be 5.9 million total reductions by 1920. That's assuming we get no additional one-time funds, or they don't decide to turn that one-time funding into ongoing funding. Now, given the more liberal state funding level, below that, you'll see the necessary reductions would not happen until 1819 of 3.2 million. And then in 1920, an additional 0.9 million would be added to that to have a total of 4.1 million. So again, I just want to stress that this is on the status quo of expenditures based on it. And it also is based on the fact that I am not budgeting one-time funding for the out years.
So to clarify, this, this doesn't include the, this includes the AFT agreement or says?
It doesn't, yes.
Which one should I be paying attention to the most? Page five?
Page three and page five.
Page three.
Three and five.
Five.
Three, four, five, six.
Well.
I do have a question, though.
I would say, actually, page, page three and page seven.
Now, the reason I was curious, looking at yours and looking at mine, yours is black and white.
Yeah.
And I thought maybe you had a different one that I didn't have.
No, it's just a copy machine.
She's the business person and she wants to save money for her.
Yeah, well, that's okay, but I was getting confused because I saw your colored one underneath.
Well, that's because you don't have as many board members here. And all my notes are on the black and white.
Okay, that's all right. That's why I was kept saying, when do I find the black pages? All right, I have a question. You did say that this was, you added in the AFT agreement, right?
Yes.
So, we saw.
Have other agreements.
Have the ones for classified.
Correct.
It's not in there.
It's still gonna be even more different.
Right, and that will, should come to you hopefully at the next meeting. And then when that gets added in, that will change for the second interim. It'll be, because this would be the adopted one. We can't change the adopted ones. But we make changes all the time to the budget. So yes, page three is what I'm asking you to approve this evening.
Alright, the conservative.
And it's the more conservative budget.
Alright, so if we approve the conservative budget, but we actually get the revenues that are listed in the liberal budget, then would you come back to us and ask us what to do with the extra funds? What, what happens with that?
You mean, for this year, for, or should I say for the budget year, 1617? We don't really expect additional funds because the budget has been put through, well, I mean, it needs to be approved still. But the budget pretty much follows what we already have in it for this year, but it's the out years. And the out years, we wouldn't actually be budgeting the out years until we get there. So this is just a projection and a multi-year projection. So when you approve a budget, what you're doing is you're approving the current year and the out years will move.
Possible.
They'll be different, and you'll approve that next year. But, so that you can make decisions as we move along and we learn more about what kind of funding we're gonna have, it won't catch you by surprise. And then I, I will of course let you know as things go along, if they look improved. And the January governor's proposal that comes out for the 1718 year will hopefully be rosier. We don't know. And of course, we have the extension of Prop 30 on the ballot, not, not for the sales tax, but for the personal income tax for the top 1% or top earners, should I say. Do keep in mind that should that pass, it won't really affect our revenues until 1920 because.
2020. Oh, sorry.
What's that?
I get it. 2019, 2020.
Yeah. 2019, 2020, right.
Yeah.
2019, 2020 school year. And the reason for that is because those taxes don't sunset for quite some time. And so it would just continue after that.
Alright, and then, so for this year, for the 2016-17 projected budget, how much of, how much strategic spending of reserves do we have for this, for that year?
Well, basically what you see there, that 2.6 million at this time.
That's how.
Of course, then we have the other negotiations.
So that's how much we're spending from the reserves?
That's how much this budget.
2,602.
Yes, authorizes. However, please keep in mind that there's always carryovers that don't get spent. And it is on the more conservative side. The amount of funding that we would expect from the state in the 1617 year is this amount because, well, we actually don't know what the one-time funds are gonna be just yet. We, we haven't. It's, it's kind of interesting because they usually publish quicker what everything looks like this year. They're kind of not going as fast in publishing it. But if we get more, more one-time funds or less one-time funds, I will be reporting that out to you within 45 days of the state passing the budget. And then it would be included in the first interim, whatever changes those are. But basically, it's an authorization to strategically spend this amount of funds. And then as we get closer to the end of the year, though this is tighter than it used to be, it's not quite as conservative as it used to be because we can't afford to be as conservative now. I would still expect that it would not be as high of a reserve spending as it shows here, although we still have the other bargaining unit and such. But that won't have as big of an effect. I do feel that it will be less than that in reserve spending.
But it looks, and I hope I'm not the only one that's a little confused by this.
Oh, no, no, not.
It looks confusing to see that for this 2016-17, we have 6,000, I mean, 6 millions, 197,633 dollars in total available reserves. And then in the next budgeted year, in the out year, 1718, we have negative 1 million. I, I kind of don't understand.
Okay, are you on page three?
Page three.
Okay.
In red.
Okay, let me look in on this one. Oh, it's a very.
Bottom of the 1718 column where it says 1,398,801, and it's in red, so I.
Correct. Okay, so what, what you really want to look at is the projected end balance, that's, that's right here.
Uh, the 1,009?
In the orange, in the middle.
Yeah.
So we have, we go from 6 million down to 1.9 million.
Right.
Down to 1.8 million and 1.8 million again.
Yes.
This is because the 5% reserve is being subtracted out of it. Because what we want is to have a 5% reserve for economic uncertainty. The, the state requires us to have a 3%, but the board has expressed that they would like to have a 5%. So this shows how much below we are from having that 5% reserve.
Alright, thanks for clarifying that.
So what we really, yeah, what you really want to look at is the projected end fund balance at, in June, that second orange line, third orange line.
But that will be the amount.
That we're short of our 5%.
Alright, so that amount is 3,517,144? That's the actual amount of reserves that we'll have, 1718?
I'm sorry, let's see, 1718, where are you looking?
I'm in the white under 5% required reserve for economic.
That 5%, that's just stating what 5% would be.
But it would be, so there would.
So our reserves are actually the number above it, 6 million.
Oh, alright.
Okay.
And so that 6 million is 1,398 less. Now I'm definitely confused.
Okay, so that's 6 million, if you subtract out the 3.5 million for 5% reserve.
Now I got it.
Okay. And the 1.9 million in 1718, you start subtracting out the 5% reserve. It doesn't have enough to carry a 5% reserve.
Alright. I'm, I'm asking these questions now. I wish other people were here to hear this because many times it's been stated in these public meetings of how much money we're sitting on as far as reserves. But I don't think people realize how fast that money can be gone.
Yeah, it, it can go fast, especially when you look at that last page, page seven, and you see the, the reductions that we would need in the future if the revenues did match these revenues and the, and the expenditures did match these expenditures in, in here, in that second line that says total, all expenditures and transfers. That 50,000 that you, the 50,628,000 that you see there, that already has a reduction of 1.2 million from that. So we would have to, if we don't get more revenues and such, and if we did end up spending these funds this, in 1617, we would have to make 1.2 million dollars worth of reductions in order to meet our 3% required reserve. But then again, if we don't spend all the money that we plan on spending in 1617, then our end fund balance will be higher.
Right.
And then that dollar for dollar that will reduce the amount that we would have to cut or reduce in expenditures.
Alright. Just for clarification and for the record, can you just give a estimate of how much money we spend per month as a district? Is it about 3 million?
Well, let's see here. I would just take that 51 million and divide it really. I would, I would take some of it away. I would say for the summer months, it's, it's less money. So let's just take 6 million away and make it 54 million. So, I mean, 44 million.
So three.
So it'd be about 4.5 million dollars a month during the school year.
A month. So that's what, that message needs to be, you know, reiterated so that people understand when, when they're talking in this public meeting and people hear about us sitting on reserves and having a lot of money that we're not spending because it can be gone in a couple of months.
Very quickly, well, I think one of the things that people should think about is if you talk about a 10% reserve, that means it would get you through 10% of the year.
There you go, alright.
So even if you had a 50% reserve, which is, you know, for us personally in our lives, they say you should have one half a year as pay in your bank. A 50% reserve means we would be able to pay 50% of a year, half the year.
Well, one of the things that, that historically, we don't, none of our school sites or departments or the district, which make up the district as a whole, does not spend 100% of its budget. Historically, we tend to spend between 97 to like 98, which in a budget of 50 million is between 1.5 and 2 million dollars. So, some of those would be restricted, which we could not roll in to the, the reserves. Others could be, might be unrestricted, which would then help that bottom line in that future year. So, the nice thing about having the reserves is that we can wait a year to respond. If we didn't have these reserves, we would be needing to come to the board with this budget with some, with some very definite reductions. So, we do have the reserve. We have, right now, the reductions are at least a year off and likely at least two years away.
Right.
It's just a little concerning to me because we're, we're gonna keep having LCAP meetings. And everyone's gonna talk about and give their input about what the money should be spent on. But we might not even have the money to spend on what it was.
The question in the LCAP meetings is not gonna be, what else would you like to do? It's gonna be.
It's what is the most important to keep.
What is the most important and most effective? That's the question. Next year will be of the plans and programs that we've put in place, what have been the most effective? And which have been, you know, most, most improved, you know, improved the program, so. We, we tried a lot of different things and not all of them are, are equally effective. So, we do need to bring that effectiveness lens onto expanding future funds.
And I think it will be very helpful in the 1617 year, when we get the governor's January proposal, which will come very close to when we're starting to put together our second interim. Our first interim will be done, so we'll have kind of fine-tuned things and we'll be able to see where we are in the year. At that time, this just gives us the time to give you the heads up to say, look, it, it is, it is serious and we are going to have to consider where are our priorities and maybe our LCAP is too rich at this point.
And so, you know, 20 years ago, school districts would just pass single-year budgets.
Yes.
And so all we would see would be the 1617, right? Which looks fine. It looks great.
Right.
So then, so then we had situations like, I believe, Vallejo and Oakland and several other school districts that found themselves in very difficult situations. And legislature now said, when you pass your budget, pass it for your single year, but also look ahead what might be coming in year two and three with the same assumptions moving forward. And so that way, this, this is the kind of conversation I think that the legislator anticipated school boards would have because it wouldn't be a surprise when that year comes. It's like, okay, you, you, you've seen, you've looked out two years and, and you know what, what might be coming. You don't need to respond to it right now, but you need to, we need to start paying attention to that. Sort of like when we're driving and we look up ahead and you're paying attention to, you know, children and pedestrians and you don't need to brake right now, but you need to make sure that as you get closer, if those situations are still in play, that you may need to respond.
And, and if you recall, recall a couple of years ago when we started with the LCFF and the LCAP and such, we made a point of making sure that a fair amount of the new expenditures that we were having, we're making, were things that we could pull back in on the future years. Particular one I'll point out is the, one of the very first ones is where we gave a lot of additional funds to the school sites for their discretionary funds. And that ended up being 3.2 million dollars. And so, those are the areas that we, we always said to ourselves, if we had to, it would be an area that could be considered maybe less painful. But every year, as they've increased the LCAP, like Mr. Vidalis said, some things are gonna be more successful than others as we go along and we learn. And that's the point, is we learn which ones are successful and which ones would be the first to go if we couldn't afford to keep them any longer.
Alright, so that makes a lot of sense. So we would, that, that discussion would happen before a menu of possible cuts even comes to us.
Right, well before.
That makes sense. It feels a little better than my first night on the board five years ago.
Oh, yeah.
We were cutting that night. So, I guess my last question would be, how do we communicate this in a better way during, you know, when everyone comes back and they, they understand that the, the student facing and the teachers, like those are ongoing funds that we're not gonna be able to take back?
Well, I mean, we could take back a lot of funds. I mean, it's not, I mean, we could, but that's not something that we would typically, that you would typically do.
Services and.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, but I do think that there's several opportunities throughout the year to discuss this. There's un-audited actuals, there's audited actuals, there's first interim, there's a second interim, there's a January budget proposal. I mean, so there are at least six opportunities throughout the year, at least at board meetings where this is communicated. This would also be communicated at all our LCAP community meetings as well. Um just because these are spoken and shared doesn't mean that it's understood and received, so and we can only do so much. And I think it's, and I think mostly it's the board that needs to understand it and um.
That's true.
Right.
And because you are the ones who would be making the decisions, so. And if something is not clear, you should let us know so that we could make it clear, because it's important that you understand it. We can try to explain it to uh a variety of people and we do, um but it's not always understood or accepted.
Well, even though I'm concerned, I'm still, I I know that we were certified as positive. So that means we're able to pay our bills for the next two to three years.
The current and the following two years.
Alright, so I mean, that's, I understand that and I'm happy about that, but you already know that whenever I see the decreases in these out years. I have to, I have to ask questions.
The biggest decrease that you would look for is in the yellow, when the first line in the yellow is smaller than the second line in the yellow. That means the revenues that are coming in for that particular year are less than the expenditures going out for that particular year. Unless you know that there is this big one-time expense that's gonna go away.
Right.
In in the following years, so that is what, and and another thing is if you look at the um orange lines there. You see, we start out at the beginning of this year or the of of sixteen seventeen or plan on ending since fifteen sixteen. With eight point six six seven million dollars, right? That is based on the budget as it is now. And at the end of the year, we will have carryover again, and so we we will be looking at um. A higher end balance this for this current year than that eight point six seven, six six million. So if it's a million dollars more, then that means right off the bat, that uh planned reduction in seventeen eighteen. Instead of being one point two million, would just be point two.
Alright.
Now, of course, there's still the bargaining unit things that are in there, but it there's there's so many different things, but this is just to kind of let you know. This is just what the budget is, it's not the actuals.
So what we're actually doing is doing the sixteen seventeen.
Yes.
It's just projections. Good questions to ask.
Yes, thank you for asking those questions, it's helpful.
I don't have any other.
Are we ready to vote on this?
Well, I move that we approve the two thousand and sixteen to seventeen proposed budget for active district funds.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it's opposed, so and remember, this is the proposed budget, so I'm sure there'll be changes down the road.
Absolutely.
All the time, thank you very much. So be good, okay, move on, okay, uh G, CSBA Annual Conference. So I won't read the whole thing, but.
Right.
I'm sure you guys all read it, so.
I'm interested this time, I didn't go to the last one, so.
Yeah, so this is um just information for me, so um if uh you want to go, um we will be registering you. Um so we can get the early regist- registration. Um also, there are some pre-conference um activities, um if you're interested in one of those. Also, um letting us know, it is local, so we don't have airfare and we don't have hotel. Um so it is um possible and encouraged that all board members who are able to go should go to this one.
So I know, I I would like to also attend. I'm toying with the pre-conference activities, I generally like to go to the the one that's um for um legal.
Yeah, legal issues for experienced board members.
New board members and board.
And then they have the board president, but you think you think I can pass the board president all these years, or you think I should go?
I don't know.
I don't know, is anybody, are you gonna go to the legal one?
Um probably not, yeah.
We learn a lot from that.
Yeah, so that one, um I don't need to know quite yet, I'll I'll put a reminder um in in the NFO bulletin if you need to to let me know earlier.
But you want us to take advantage of the early bird?
Yes.
If we save some money, we save money.
I will follow up with Dr. Douglas and um Miss uh Yang Anai, uh and see what their interest level is.
I mean, I'd be interested as well, just, you know, since it's local, it's close by.
Yeah, we do have funding for all of you, I set aside in the board, board professional development budget for sixteen seventeen.
Definitely, when we go to these things, it is work. We don't play.
It's it's work, but you you learn a lot, it's it's not necessarily like working, but you you feel like you're actually taking in a lot of stuff and you could actually bring it back. Talking to people from throughout the state and you hear about all these different ideas on uh ways in for the school district. It's like, I think it's actually beneficial for just anybody on the school board.
So this is listed for action, um so if you guys want to make an, if one of you wants to make a motion um to send five board members to the CSBA conference. Based on availability, that'd be great.
Being that it's early bird, you can always, if someone decides they're not going, you can always take it back, right?
Um I will likely register close to the end, um and I can, I take the, they don't give us any refunds. So I I pay, we, my registration is a little bit more because I I wait till the end to make my registration, just in case one of you is not able to go. So we 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 can use your credit.
Oh, I get it, that's smart, that's good, okay.
So I move that we approve sending up to five board members. To the CSBA Annual Conference, December third, um excuse me, December first through December third, two thousand and sixteen.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So um yours comes out of.
Mine comes out of a different budget, yeah.
Yeah, see, we save ours a little bit. Okay, so that's good, so next one, I think the rest will be, I'll start here. So so under item, I guess, it looks like it's eleven, right?
Eleven A.
Eleven A, certificate of retirement, two thousand fifteen sixteen. Um, okay, administration recommends approval of the retirement request from Barbara Z.
Zvanik.
Zvanik, okay, English language arts coach, effective June the tenth, two thousand sixteen. She's been employed by the district since August the thirtieth, two thousand. And um the administration requ- requests an appropriate resolution we prepare commending her for her years of service with the district. Sounds good, it's a loser.
Yep.
Okay, so the motion?
I'll make a motion to um approve the retirement request from Barbara Zonwick. Uh effective June tenth, twenty sixteen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Okay, so we'll have that. Next one is administrative appointment for two thousand sixteen seventeen, administration recommends approval of the following administrative appointment. It's Maria Ramos, Vice Principal at Ben Franklin Middle School, effective July twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, two hundred and eight workdays. One M W D M A, step two. Uh hundred and two dol- hundred, two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Plus a two thousand, two hundred dollar stipend for a double master's degree. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative appointment of Maria Ramos as the Vice Principal of Ben Franklin Middle School, effective July twenty eighth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Nope.
Okay, well, we'll say, we'll tell her welcome when we go to Ben Franklin School.
Yes.
Okay, so the next one item we have is down to um E, resolution number sixteen oh six twenty-two B. As a resolution to lay off. Yeah, the recommend, the administration recommends to the governing board approve resolution sixteen oh six to twenty-two B. It's an intent, it's a resolution of intention to reduce or eliminate certain classified services.
So is this based on just individual sites, their needs and their wants, alright, yeah, we don't have much.
So uh that's that's from the um.
One of them is a site council decision, the other one is a program um change, our kindergartens are now going to be in school longer. So EDC, extended daycare, is shorter. But all individuals affected are um either transferring um to other positions or keeping their hours at another school.
One chose to actually stay in the reduced hour position because it worked for her schedule, so.
Yeah, I know it always sounds worse when you read this, but, you know, okay.
So the, so some of the employees will have another position with the same amount of hours, you said?
Yes.
Alright, that's good.
All, three of the four people that this impacts, three are in the EDC and one the bilingual, they all have the same hours. Uh and so everything was taken care of even prior to this.
Alright.
Um having to be put open for for bumping and all that, the one chose to stay at the reduced hours.
Alright, great.
So everyone seems to be happy.
No problems.
Okay, so a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number sixteen dash zero six dash twenty-two B.
Could we have a?
And resolution to reduce or eliminate certain classified services.
I'll second that.
So Maria, would you call them?
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwala?
Aye. Okay, that passed, so number fourteen, board member comment, oh, wait. I wanted to overlook, I thought we could get away with it. Board policies, administrative regulations, so uh the, it's for a first reading. And it's uh the board policy administrative regulations, uh April two thousand fifteen, board policy revisions. So.
So.
Wait, have anything, you want to say, right?
I did just want to identify that one of the, if there has to be a good thing about being so far behind in the uh. Adopting other policies is that we are far enough behind that we got a revision to a revision. So we just pulled out the first revision and substituted in the second one, so this is for charter school oversight, so now we're up to date on that one as of May twenty sixteen, so.
Great.
Okay. Okay, so um do it, uh are there any questions on what you read? If not, we can have a vote for a first reading.
I move that we approve the first reading of the board policies and administrative regulations from April two thousand and fifteen. CSBA Board Policy Revisions. And E zero four twenty point forty-one Charter School Oversight from May two thousand and sixteen. CSBA Board Policy Revisions.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, passed, that will be on the next uh meeting for a second read.
Correct.
Okay, so item, item fourteen, board member comments, reports and reflection on board meeting guidelines.
Yes.
You start.
I'll just go straight to uh reflection and I chose bullet point five, one, two, three, four, five. We will stay focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked, we will keep our focus on the best interests of our students. And I chose that one mainly because of the last part of the statement, just that. We're here to focus on the students and what's best for them and that's it.
Um I selected, we will listen actively to all ideas, we will open act openly without preparing responses. We we talked a lot about the budget, so just kind of understanding the budget in better perspective and just taking all that information in for the future. I thought that kind of worked pretty well for the meeting, yeah.
So I I did, I, uh number, bullet number six, we will keep our remarks brief and to the point so that all opinions can be expressed. I think we did that tonight, so I think we're following our guidelines. And other than that, I have no spirit cards, nobody else wants to say anything, but we're gonna close our meeting early. Um last night, I thought the Giants were ahead, but I hope they still are and I hope they won. Find out when I get home, so I'd like to take a um moment of of silence and 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 adjourn the meeting. In memory of um Erlinda Gallion. Okay, other than that, the time is, oh boy, eight oh one, meeting adjourned.